Testing, just making sure you can hear me. This is Carmen Bratze. Thank you.
...
Liberty and Justice for...
All right, we have some special guests this evening from the Department of Ed who are going to be giving us some training this evening on the balanced scorecard. That's your cue. Whenever you're ready, sir.
I can barely hear.
Is that better? Thank you. Soon as we get the deck slide up here, we'll get started. While they're getting that loaded there, I'll go ahead and introduce myself. My name is Jeff Kelly. I'm Assistant Superintendent over the Accountability Office for the West Virginia Department of Education. That house is three offices. One of which is the Accountability Office, as well as our leadership and our assessment offices. I have with me this evening our Director of the Accountability Office, which is Alex Kriner. Does a lot of our field work and is the expert, I would say, regarding Policy 2322, which I'm going to cover. And like, I'm going to try to break this down into basically thirty minutes at from thirty thousand feet on the forty-one slides that I just gave you. Those are not all forty-one content slides. Some of them are headers, but I'm going to try to stay at thirty thousand feet on those. And then we'll try to devote about fifteen minutes to methodology page, which is in our, on our website, which is like... Which explains how the scores are calculated for their respective areas of the accountability model. And I'm going to show you how to get to that. It's a page I visit off, even though I feel like I've probably been there a thousand times. So if we can start with this portion. That's all right. So Policy 2322 is what... Is what accountability model sort of follows. And its purpose is to ensure each county board... We'll see if that helps. Thank you. Is to ensure that each county board provides a thorough and efficient education for its students. We have a county status review and determination, which is based on multiple measures. You'll see through this process that we have the balanced scorecard indicators. I hope you guys are at least somewhat familiar with those, as well as the operational effectiveness indicators. This policy was last revised in June by the West Virginia Board of Education, June of twenty-four, that is, and became effective July of twenty-four. So, next slide, please. They'll get to that next slide here in just a second, but I'll go ahead and start talking about it. The West Virginia Code eighteen-two E or dash two E dash five establishes a school system approval. The State Board does this annually and reviews information that's submitted from our various offices to assess how counties are going in the areas identified throughout here. Next slide. So the primary roles of our office, roles and responsibility, that is, accompanying this process. You'll hear Ms. Kriner say this quite often, is quality assurance. She preaches that within our office, of course, within the counties when we visit. Also, this allows us to notify counties of their accountability identification using score card data. Notify counties of their annual accountability designations, which I believe are in October, if I'm not mistaken. So what you'll see happen in August is our assessment office will bring about the data from the assessment, last year's assessment. And then accompanying that later on in October, you'll hear Ms. Kriner at State Board meeting talk about the accountability designations. Our office also conducts special circumstance reviews. They coordinate state of emergency and immediate interventions as directed by the West Virginia Board of Education. Of course, we recommend county approval status, and we recognize counties as well when they're doing well. Next slide. We have the two of us, as well as three other team members in our accountability office, Dr. Mural, Angela Erling, and Tammy Varney. You might recognize Dr. Mural's name because she assists with your all's assessment, your self-assessment each year. And she's the point person for that and takes your all's calls and questions whenever you have... Next slide, please. Much of what we do is based on the West Virginia standards for affected schools, and I'm not going to read all of those, but you'll hear most of our offices speak at length about those when they visit your county to assist or to support. And obviously, much of that is around safe and supportive schools and obviously, quality education for our students in the counties. Next slide, please. So we're going to get into the accountability system here, so we can move on. In the balance, or a slide too many here. As far as the WVAS, what it is, is a comprehensive system of measurements that defines school expectations for continuous improvement. And that's an item that we strive for in all of our counties, our continuous improvement. We hope that counties look at this data and this model at the end of each year to assess where they are and obviously use that information to plan to improve upon other academic programs moving forward. Next slide. Actually, two slides. One more, please. So we get into the indicators, and if you guys visited our, or visited the page to view your balanced scorecard, I'm assuming you have. But so you've seen that snapshot with the various indicators. But the indicators of performance used to measure and establish methods for collecting the annual reporting of data include academic achievement and academic progress, that's your growth indicator, your graduation rates, your English language proficiency progress based on the results of your ELP and English learners, students in grades three through eight and eleven. And then student success, which is calculated on attendance, behavior, on track to graduate, post-secondary achievement within each of the programmatic levels. Next slide, please. Important of note here, there are some factors which dictate who is included in these calculations. System requirements include full academic year. You'll hear frequently folks talk about F A. Full academic year is, those are students that are enrolled for at least one hundred and thirty-five days in a specific school or county. Of course, we have a lot of students that move about, so that is a factor when calculating your balanced scorecard, where they present for that one hundred and thirty-five days. Also, minimum cell sizes, in many of our smaller counties, we may have cell sizes of students even in grade levels, where there are less than twenty students in a particular subgroup. Programmatic levels, school classifications are based on the highest grade level. So if you have a six through eight, that's a middle school or designated middle school. But also, if you have a K through eight, they are generally designated a middle school as well. Participation rate for all F A students, and each subgroup is set at ninety-five percent. Next slide, please. You guys stop me at any point if you have any clarifying questions here as we go through the thirty thousand foot piece. Slide here. So when you get to the balanced scorecard, which each of you have indicated, you'll notice there are those colors of green, blue, yellow, and red. And as most would discern there, green means good. Red is usually an area that needs attention, of course, then the two areas in between, yellow and blue. So you should get a pretty good picture when you land, and we're going to go to the, to the landing page here in a little bit of where you stand, just based on those colors and the various areas set forth in the balanced scorecard. So county support and accountability, you'll see that we have three stages here. Stage one, this would be your on-watch identifier or identification. This is when a county has one or more indicators that do not meet standard. And you'll see some county responsibilities over there, that counties are expected to diagnose and build structures to facilitate county-wide improvement, review your strategic plan, and then monitor progress moving forward. And we, as a department, will provide technical assistance on that front. So, for example, if you have an area in which you're on watch, for example, such as special ed, our special ed department would provide assistance in helping you build those structures, the strategic plan, and monitoring progress. Stage two, support identification. This is any indicator that does not meet standards and does not show improvement for two consecutive years. Again, you go back to your strategic plan, you monitor progress, and then we step up our support, as well as we'll provide technical assistance as determined necessary by the department or at the request of county leadership. And then we get to stage three. This is when we get to intensive support identification. This is when any indicator that does not meet standard and does not show improvement for three consecutive years. At this juncture, we would adjust the strategic plan based on the lack of improvement in stage two. Then we would monitor progress. You would report that progress to the West Virginia Department of Education quarterly to our office. We would then continue to provide technical support, monitor that progress, and we would make annual recommendations to the State Board, including non-approval status based on lack of progress. So as you can see, there's a, there's a process in place, and it doesn't occur overnight where we try to identify deficiencies and provide support to prevent counties and schools getting to that third consecutive year of concerns.
I do have a question. Can you provide a couple of examples of the level of technical assistance for stage two versus stage three? In general, you know, in those common types of...
I'm thinking about, we might provide training, P D, to a county. And I mentioned special ed earlier. Our special ed folks travel a lot to counties and do professional development, maybe with special ed directors or special ed staff, teachers, especially on the side of compliance. That's where you get dinged a lot on special ed. To intensify that, we might require, for example, the superintendent to bring in somebody, a specialist, from outside the county to provide support and be on the ground, boots on the ground, maybe more frequently, and provide more intensive support. I think that would be an example of where that would escalate a little bit. And I'll say this, most of those, most of those situations are very unique. They're similar but different from county to county. I think you've probably seen, we've had a great deal of involvement in counties across the state. Some of them are similar and some of them are different. So we try to spend some time with the folks at the county level to make sure that we're building the right supports for that scenario. So it's not a cookie cutter, cookie cutter approach. So if there are issues, we can try to build that around what, what we're seeing both in the data, what, what our superintendents are telling us in regards to what they think is needed as well, as well as what our, our offices are seeing when they visit. County operational effectiveness. Next slide, please. So these are the indicators of efficiency where we use the appropriate divisions within the department. For example, finance, they'll monitor as well how you're doing on that front, again, to ensure that you're being efficient and that you're using your resources appropriately. Counties are designated as meets requirements or needs assistance in eleven indicators. Designations are determined using, using an evaluation of records, reports, and other documents regarding the quality education and compliance with statutes, policies, and state-approved standards. Next slide, please. And you'll see those eleven indicators here, career tech, child nutrition, facilities, federal programs, finance, personnel. Facilities, there are my apologies. Special ed, as I mentioned before, data collections, transportation, universal pre-K, and of course, county board effectiveness. Education member effectiveness. Those are the eleven areas under our county operational effectiveness indicators. Next slide. So any needs assistance identification in a county's annual profile requires the development of an action plan by county leadership with assistance from the department, where she implement the plan, and then we monitor that progress to see that you're going in the right direction. After planning implementation, the department makes recommendations to the State Board based on that progress. And you'll often hear when we have counties that are coming before our State Board, that they are to come back usually in a period of time. It's often six months in our intervention and state of emergency situations, but sometimes they'll require that more frequently. And what the State Board wants to hear in those instances is that there, there's a plan in place, that it is being executed, and that progress is being made. We're very aware that sometimes when you have concerns that rise to that level, that the, the issue did not come into play overnight and the procedures are not executed overnight as well. So we're very conscientious to give you all time, or county's time, to execute a plan toward that progress and not flip a switch and expect it to be fixed overnight. Next slide, please. One more. Thank you. So again, part of the Accountability Office's responsibilities is assessing situations where there are extraordinary circumstances. In this case, we're speaking about a state of emergency. We've had a couple of these here recently. I'm sure you've read about the paper. These are items that do not rise to the level of an immediate intervention, but are causing enough for concern that our State Board feels like there needs to be some elevated attention to the situation. Again, this is reference to code here, again, eighteen dash two E dash five. Extraordinary circumstances include, but are not limited to, misappropriation of funds, misuse of funds, falsification of reports, failure to submit, code violations, policy violations. You'll hear us talk a lot, and our superintendents will, when they call about something, the first thing we'll say is, what does the code say? What does the policy say? What does your county policy say? We usually try to start from there and see where that takes us, because that, if we, if we do just that, we'll solve a lot of our problems. Of course, unhealthy or unsafe conditions are something that would rise to this level as well. State of emergency. Next slide, please. Also, schools failure to provide a high-quality or equal education opportunities for students. Obviously, that's why we're there, teaching and learning. So if we're failing in that aspect in a system or in a school, we're going to get involved. Efficiencies in leadership, defiance of law or policy, again, you'll see there, willful neglect of duty, C B M, board governance, and county superintendent operational relations. May divert from efforts to focus on accountability for student achievement. And teaching and learning and achievement is why we're here. So if the relationship or the function of the superintendent and or board is somehow standing as a barrier to that, that's something we're going to take notice of pretty quickly. New as of last year, failure of the board members to fill their statutory training requirements and any training prescribed by the department or the State Board. That, that's something that came into the policy in last year that has been added. Next slide, please. And I want to, before I move on from that, I want to say that the School Board Association's done a fantastic job on that front collectively, the board members and the leadership there, in making sure that not only those opportunities exist, but that, that everybody has an opportunity to get there and get that taken care of. So my hat's off to them. Again, when a state of emergency occurs, you see this, as you did earlier, corrective action plan. Our department will provide recommendations to the State Board within at least sixty or by sixty days to correct the deficiencies. The board will review and approve as appropriate the corrective action plan. Once approved, the county has six months to implement the recommendations to correct. And then, of course, what we look for when those counties come back to present to the State Board is that progress toward a better situation or corrective measures. If a county does not show that progress during that six-month period, it can lead to one or more of the following interventions. It can limit the authority of the board, declare the office of the county superintendent vacant, declare positions of personnel who serve at the will and pleasure of the county superintendent to be vacant, fill those vacancies, and then can take any direct action necessary to correct extraordinary circumstances. So there are a set of, oh, really, broad options there for the State Board when these situations arise. So there are a set of, uh, oh, really, uh, broad options there for the state board, uh, when these situations arise. Also, a county superintendent may remove the principal of a low performing school who exhibits deficiencies in leadership. And again, you'll see there at the very bottom, uh, of that slide, that the department or the board of education, state board of education can issue nonapproval status to a county. Next slide. So again, just another way to, to see this in front of you guys. State of emergency process. WVBE provides, uh, state board within sixty days, those recommendations. Board then reviews and approves the plan, and then the county has that six months, uh, to show progress on those fronts. Next slide. And this is, uh, terminology, again, the director Criner uses quite frequently here, uh, that state of emergencies are, uh, basically a probationary period to allow counties and schools, superintendents, central office staff to address these issues, um, in a six month period. And you'll often see, uh, well, when we get to those, those six month updates, basically there are three things that can occur. County can have the state of emergency lifted or removed, uh, it can be extended, usually for another six month period. Uh, you'll see that frequently, especially when that progress has been shown. Or, um, if not, uh, if not, then the state board shall intervene. I think that's an important piece to the state of emergencies. If in that window, a county does not show that progress, there's not an option for our state board at that juncture. They are required by law, says they shall intervene in the operation of the school system. That's obviously something we try to avoid, but unfortunately, um, it happens, uh, at times. Next slide. So now, what I just spoke about, immediate intervention. Says the state board may intervene immediately in the operation of the county board of education. When the determination is made that decisive action is required. These are usually cases when our state board just doesn't feel like they, they can wait any longer or, uh, wait on a, a lesser type of intervention, they feel like something has to happen now. And so what you see there, the bullets, county fails to act on statutory obligation, which would interrupt day to day operations of the county. You'll hear that quite frequently in our interventions. They talk about the day to day operations and something is failing badly there. Uh, the conditions, uh, precedent to intervention exists, uh, and delaying the intervention would not be in the best interest of, of students. And you'll often hear that come out in the reports if intervention is recommended, uh, that the students are somehow, uh, their education, it's being, uh, inhibited in some way that they can't, uh, receive the teaching and, or teaching that they, they deserve. Also, the conditions precedent to intervention, uh, to intervention exists and the West Virginia Board of Education had previously intervened in the county and completed the inter- intervention within the preceding five years, which wouldn't apply to you guys at this juncture, so, so it stays that way. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. On, on the final piece, uh, the conditions precedent to intervention exists and the WVBE, the board of edu- state board of education had previously intervened in the county. That's not occurred here, uh, with you guys in the last five years. Yeah, to my knowledge, Jefferson's never been an intervention county, uh, at least not, not my lifetime that I recall, so. Next slide. All right. Uh, with the immediate intervention, the state board shall determine the required corrective action of the county board of education in accordance with that same code. Of course, those interventions may include, again, limiting the authority of the board. The same things, the declaration of the superintendent's office vacant, other positions within the office, they can fill those vacancies and take any other action necessary. We've seen those things happen, uh, the past two years. And in these cases, the state board shall issue nonapproval status until acceptable progress is demonstrated. Special circumstance review. So this is something, uh, usually when a concern, uh, has come to light. And this can be initiated by the state superintendent who will then, uh, inform the West Virginia Board of Education of the circumstances. And they'll usually ask our team to, uh, spearhead a review, uh, of the county and the circumstances that are existing or at least perceived to be existing. Uh, this may include reviews, uh, of counties and schools and or schools, uh, usually onsite reviews. Uh, we'll look at management of, uh, central office processes, for example. But it's usually Director Criner that will build that review and then draw from various offices in our, uh, in our, uh, construct to assist. So again, back to special ed, if there was a special ed issue in a county, we would work directly with Sheila Paytzel's office in the department and design a plan to go in and assess and then support. Also, a county superintendent or a local board, um, via board action at a public meeting may request a special circumstance review. We've had this, uh, where either a superintendent or board members have reached out, uh, about a concern and we try to support them in, in those scenarios. Uh, of course, the request must include specific circumstances that would warrant such for review. Any findings are to be reported within forty-five days of the review. Next slide. One more. Next slide, thank you. Uh, again, our county board of education members, um, we want to make local board agendas and minutes public on the county webpage, uh, we monitor that. How frequently our offices are all right there together, I'll frequently have, um, Ms. Criner or other team members come in and discuss with me items that are on your all's board agendas as they review those before the board meeting. In collaboration with the superintendent, we want you all to ensure that agendas include discussions of school performance, student outcomes, or academics with local board goals and actions to improve student achievement, well-being. We hope that you all make that a point to have those items constantly and consistently on your agendas, because that's ultimately why we're here. Teaching and learning is our primary, um, charge. So that should be something that you all as a board are not only interested in, but that you're receiving information from the superintendent, central office staff, uh, school-based staff, um, about how those things, uh, are going, uh, in your county and schools. Uh, if any county indicator is identified as support or intensive support under the WVAS, leadership team, the county leadership team should present plans or shall present plans, not should, shall, present plans, uh, and progress for correcting deficits, uh, and the West Virginia balance scorecard indicators of achievement, student success, and of course those operational effectiveness indicators. So back to my original statement from the get-go, when all of this data comes in, that we, we certify all this data, you get your snapshots, uh, of where you are, and then that should guide, um, your plans moving forward. And you should be having discussions about, and, uh, Superintendent Bishop should be making you all aware of those plans to correct these items. Next slide please. Okay, CBM continue. Uh, again, you guys are going to assess your annual performance using the statutorily required CBM self appraisal. That's where I missed, or I mentioned, uh, Dr. Murrell earlier, uh, that self appraisal tool is available. Not only that you just complete it, but that you make it available to the public and then you also use it to do a little bit of a self-assessment to see, you know, where you guys are and what, uh, what plans you can put in place to improve upon, uh, moving forward. In the summary of the evaluation shall be posted on county's webpage and remain posted for the entirety of the year until you do it again. Should hold annual meetings with the school, local school improvement council of each school deemed low performing. I know some counties still do all schools, I don't know if you all do, um, but you're only required now through law to do the ones that are deemed low performing. But that's also an opportunity for you guys, uh, as a board to hear from your schools and what are their plans to, uh, address, uh, their deficiency and of cour- or deficiencies and then of course to, uh, continue their successes. You report those LSIC meeting details to the department by September one, uh, for the previous school year. Now, you'll, you'll be receiving those, uh, notifications here shortly to remind you to make sure that you do so. Um, also adopt and implement a policy that provides for parent, family, uh, business and community involvement. I'm sure you guys have that in place. Next slide, also continued with the board. Uh, shall receive training related to boardsmanship, governance, effectiveness, fiscal management, school performance issues. Uh, new as of, again, last year, uh, training shall be provided between the date of the election and the beginning of the members' term of office. Again, I want to, uh, give a pat on the back to the school board association, they've done a great job, uh, in providing that to you all. Also, as requested by the state superintendent, uh, the West Virginia Board of Ed may require additional training they deem beneficial in assisting boards. So if we have, um, I guess an example, if we kind of have a, a rogue, uh, board member who, um, seems to be operating in a manner that flies in the face of policy or code, um, that might be something that rises to the level of additional training. Many of the cases where we've had to intervene, uh, in county systems, you'll see that part of the, the corrective actions is additional training for board members. That's pretty common. Also, new last year, failure to attend and complete the orientation training, annual training. The training required by the WVBE without good cause constitutes neglect of duty as outlined in West Virginia code. And board members have done, uh, pretty, pretty well on that front. Only had a few, I think in year one, a handful that, uh, didn't, didn't get there quite out of the gate, but, uh, I think we got them all there, uh, shortly thereafter. Again, I, the school board association for that and their attention to it. Next slide. Uh, county board of education staff have to develop and implement an electric county strategic improvement plan by July first. That is not longer than five years and includes the mission and goals of the county. This is something that should be fairly prevalent in your discussions at board meetings. Items within your strategic plan, uh, goals, are you targeting improvement? There should be things that, um, are consistently, uh, brought to light here in board meetings so that you all as board members can be aware of the plan. Also assemble a county leadership team, use countywide data, we've talked about that, to determine trends and priorities for improvement. Make recommendations for improvement. Ultimately assure all school leaders, uh, annual evaluation goals align to the strategic plan goals and balance scorecard, scorecard. You guys set goals for this county and the superintendent. And in turn, the central office staff should have goals that feed that machine and our school-based administrators in like should have similar goals. Everybody should be singing the same song. So this process is to achieve that. So ultimately, the goals that you are setting for this county and the superintendent are finding their way down to the school level. Next slide. County board staff should meet with each principal at least every sixty days to review data and monitor progress. I'm just going to guess that Superintendent Bishop probably has at least monthly meetings with his, uh, school-based principals where they discuss all kinds of things, uh, education, including the data that they're receiving, uh, obviously with, or with, uh, House Bill thirty, thirty-five and the beginning, middle and end of year testing now, uh, we get great chunks of data, uh, three times a year that help us have these exact conversations and, and discuss our progress. Also, that's that, the central office staff should collaborate with parents, stakeholders, school staff, county staff and school leadership teams. That's the exact same thing that previous slide talked about with you guys. There should be opportunities for those same groups of people, uh, to be heard.
Excuse me, you said we could ask questions at any time, I just don't want to run out of time, so I, I have a few questions.
Okay.
I'm trying to understand where to find the attrition rates, teacher attrition rates. I see that you're responsible for personnel data. It lists the, um, percentage of certified teachers in different categories, but I'm not able to find attrition rates. Do you have that somewhere?
I do not. Um, I feel like I had this question, uh, I'm going to say about two months ago, and we ran this back through Mr. Hagerman's office, I believe. And I can't remember off the top of my head, uh, what his response was. But I will go back to him and, uh, see what his response was at that time, and then I'll get that to the superintendent and he can share with you all.
Okay, um, my other question, it's the same question that I asked several months ago when I called. It, it's about, the question was, why aren't, um, why isn't behavior monitored or, uh, reported for secondary, high school? So it's listed under elementary and middle school, but not high school. And I'm trying to understand why that is.
Um, I was not here when they constructed, uh, this model, so I don't know the thought processes, but I was getting ready to turn it over to Director Criner.
Again, I, as part of the ESA plan, there are certain federal requirements for student success. And what is logical to me is that when you're looking at, um, you know, the behavior part of that in elementary school, that developmentally, as they move on toward high school, the focus becomes less on that behavior and more on, um, you know, what are they going to do after graduation? So we start looking at the post-secondary achievement and the on-tractor graduation, um, at the high school level just because of the developmental level of the student. Um, I would say that that's what rationale was behind that. Um, and because there are multiple measures of student success that have to be reflected in the ESA plan in order to meet the approval requirements.
Okay, I, I can understand that. I, I just, I know that at the secondary level, there are, um, behaviors that interfere with learning. And I, I understand that the legislators have recently enacted some new laws to help teachers in classrooms with, um, discipline. Can you explain that in layman's terms, exactly how that should look in a classroom?
Well, if Mr. McClanahan was here, I would defer to him, and that's probably going to be. And that's probably going to be a separate training, and we can certainly arrange that. I was not prepared to speak to that specific code tonight. So I don't want to without my notes or a prepared set of items to discuss with you. But I can certainly provide a little bit of information with the initial question back to the superintendent. And then if you all would like, we can arrange for Mr. McClanahan to visit and talk about discipline. I will say this. The mechanisms for discipline, and I've been a teacher, I've been an assistant principal, principal at the high school level. Those pieces have always been in play. It's a matter of building a disciplined program that is fair, but also holds students accountable. Some places execute that better than others. Didn't have a lot. I've been, been doing discipline for 15-plus years. Never really had a problem with discipline. I know that some of our counties and schools are struggling on that front. But some of the very things that I heard come up during legislative sessions, or during the legislative session, even the last two sessions, are things that could have already been addressed within the current construct. So whether counties or schools were doing that, I can't speak to it. I know what my experience has been. I hope that the new legislation is effective and benefits our schools and, and maybe helps some of our folks that were struggling. But from where I sat as an administrator at the school level, I don't know that it would have changed much for the way we operate.
I think you're, Dr. Joey, I think you're speaking specific to Senate Bill 199.
Yeah.
Primarily, that addresses elementary behavior, the new pieces do. And staff has been working on putting together a process by which we will implement Senate Bill 199. And we can share that with you at a future board meeting.
Well, because there was the previous bill that allowed teachers to send a student out who was disruptive, is that still in effect?
Say that again.
Is that still in effect, or has that changed?
Is what in effect?
That policy, that last year, that I think it was last year, that was passed. Because the teachers aren't aware of it and of how that looks in their classes.
Well, I mean, I, again, those are processes that I think the superintendent, and again, the school-based administrators are going to have to establish, you know, those protocols and procedures for what that's going to look like in their school. And I had those things in place, so this isn't really new to me from where I'm sitting. And I'll also add, I think it's tomorrow, I don't know if I'll be back in time. But we're, we're having an internal meeting on that exact code. And it's finalizing the documentation, the guidance documentation. It's going to go out to our superintendents, who can then use it with their staffs, especially coming back to school here with their meetings with principals. So I imagine that I've got no Superintendent Bishop fairly well over. Since his arrival here, I got a feeling that he'll have a plan in place and that that'll trickle down to the schools. And they'll be, be able to effectively implement the aspects of that new code.
I guess this is my last question.
Okay.
I believe that the federal government removed monies from, I think, Title II, III, and IV. And Title III deals with English language learners. Is that correct?
I can't speak to that.
The ESL program, is that correct?
That's the rumor on the street.
Okay.
There is some discussion about that. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, 1 o'clock. Our Dr. Ebersole has been boots on the ground in communication with federal program staff. But we do have a follow-up meeting tomorrow at 1 o'clock with Superintendent Blatt, which will be done by teams where they will receive the latest update on federal funding.
My concern is because in our county especially, we have a, a high percentage of English language learners. And looking at the scorecard, we need help. And if we're losing money from the federal funds, I'm wondering how the state might help.
Well, I'll, I'll see what Superintendent Blatt and our federal programs folks have to say tomorrow during that meeting. Obviously, it's a great concern, not just here in West Virginia, but it's going to affect all of us across the country. I don't have those answers immediately. Hopefully, we'll get some good news. Crossing my fingers there, but we'll keep you posted. And I'm sure that Superintendent Bishop will do so as well.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We're kind of running out up against it here on time. So there were only a few slides left there. But I'm, I'm wanting to jump over to the department website real quick.
I'm sorry. Before you do that, I see that Ms. Lori Ogden had a question on the chat. And she says, what two areas do school systems score the lowest on? And what can we do to improve those areas?
On the balance, well, let's go to the balance scorecard and I'll be able to show you. It's going to be right here in just a second. I have a gentleman in the back who's going to switch me over to the state website here. Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, usually, usually the two, I mean, attendance has been, attendance has been the biggest problem. Good Lord, for some time now. Now, we've made some strides there in our attendance numbers over the last couple of years out of COVID. Also, we usually see some deficiencies in math. That's one that's pretty common in counties. I wanted to bring up the website here because our website's been recently redone. And I wanted to make sure that everybody knew how to get to the scorecard. So if you, in the ribbon there, you'll see the data and school improvement piece. Yeah, click right there, please. And if you just come straight down to education data and then scroll down, there's a couple of various ways you can get there from here. You can go through the accountability system, or you click on the Zoom data. Either is going to get you there. And of course, this is our landing page for our balance scorecard. If you scroll down, you will see those attendance indicators over on the right side. A lot of people look at this and think a lot of red is worse than a little red. So it's just a common mistake. But actually, when you have a lot of red, you're getting ready to cross that line to the right and turn to yellow. It's the areas where you see little red that we have significant issues. Again, I wasn't here at the design phase of this, so don't kill the messenger. So you see that attendance has been a significant problem. And we've been talking to our superintendents in counties at great, at great length about strategies. And, and I listen, I take my hat off to our folks in the field, our practitioners out there that are literally going and visiting homes. Our, our folks in the building who are picking up the phone and calling homes every morning to make sure the kids are okay and trying to get them to school. But attendance is by far our, our biggest issue. And I want to make a point here. We went over this data, I think it was two Septembers ago. The, the difference in students who are chronically absent, students who are generally present, is about 14 and 18% respectively on our testing. Those kids that show up on a daily basis and benefit from teaching do pretty well. Those kids that are not in school are, you know, their proficiency rates are double digits behind those kids there. That's why the attendance factor is so important. If we can get the attendance piece moving in the right direction, all of those other pieces in the balance scorecard are going to benefit. So we're pressing, we're putting a lot of resources in place, both at the state level and at the county level. So my hat's off to those folks again. Again, I mentioned there, you see quite a bit of red in the mathematics side of things. Of course, we know we have less and less certified math teachers. So that's something that we're trying to work on as well. Of great importance here, on the left-hand side, you'll see a menu. You can choose a school year, you can choose a district. But if you scroll down there, there's a piece called methodology. And that's the book that you have, that we shared with you guys. And this lays out how everything is scored. So whenever you see a red, or you see a yellow, and you're curious about that calculation, you can literally go to the methodology. It'll tell you how that's calculated. It'll give you examples of how it's calculated. And you can see just how that works and how it has a resulting number. We can go back to the balance scorecard page. Go back. Yes. You'll also notice here, if you click on, for example, on track to graduate in the bottom right-hand corner, it'll take you to the exact page of that methodology, or the, the exact methodology page where it discusses that item. I was hoping to get into the guts of that a little bit more, but we're right up on 6 o'clock. So I didn't think I was probably going to get an extension. But I did want to make you all aware of that methodology page. It's something that's often overlooked. I think people get to the page with all the colors and they kind of stop there. I would get over there. Also, back on the balance scorecard page, just above all those charts, you'll see that you can click and download the data set. And you can do that for your county. And it'll give you the actual numbers. So I think it downloaded for you up there. Yeah. So it'll populate those numbers for you. And you can get a little better feel if you're a numbers person like I am, where, where you stand, which helps you in your planning, in your goal setting, when you want to improve by 2% or 4% or 6%. I'll stop right there for now. Probably crammed about a three-hour or two-hour session into about 58 minutes, 56 minutes, and ask if there's any remaining questions, or if you'd like me to continue.
Any remaining questions? Well, Mr. Kelly and Ms. Kriner, I just want to thank you for being here this evening. And, you know, as you mentioned, the Office of Accountability is not just for corrective actions and interventions, but it's also for support of continuous improvement with guidance and technical assistance. About four or five years ago, we actually requested a special circumstance review of our high school guidance because we realized that we had, you know, some deficiencies and we wanted to adopt best practices. And you guys were a great resource for us, so we appreciate it.
That was actually before my time, but Ms. Kriner was around. And she, she spoke at length about that process on our way up. And I will say, we would much prefer go that, go that route and get up or get in a county on the front side of things, so to speak, and provide support. And I say this to the superintendent, and he reaches out sometimes, and sometimes I reach out to him. And, but we try to work together to do what is best to benefit students. And again, if we can do that on the front side of things, that is much, much better for all of us. So, but I thank you for your kind words.
Thank you very much, and you have a safe trip back to Charleston, because I know that's quite the drive.
Yes. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.